Meeting for February 16th. Mr. Kleckner is downstairs with the Advisory Committee presenting the budget and he'll be joining us back in about a half hour, forty-five minutes from now. So, we're on our own for the first part of the meeting and Selectman Daley is visiting her daughter in Ireland. This is school vacation week, so she's off in other climes. I was going to say sunnier climes, but perhaps not. And I understand we don't have anyone signed up for public comment tonight, so I'll move right on to our miscellaneous calendar. And the first item is the minutes for February 9th. Are there any changes?
I gave Kate some edits.
I didn't have any. Okay, so I will move acceptance of the minutes of February 9th as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And we also have the minutes for the joint meeting with the School Committee from February 4th. And I don't have any changes. Okay, so I'll move acceptance of the minutes of the joint meeting on February 4th. All those in favor, Selectman Franco.
I abstain.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Can we just quickly go back to Selectman announcements?
Ah, I'm sorry. Yes.
You skipped over my moment to shine in the sun.
Yes, sorry about that.
I just wanted to make people aware of a meeting that Boston University is going to be holding tomorrow evening. It's an informational meeting regarding its plans, the university's plans, for the development of a new performing arts center in the general area of 808 Commonwealth Avenue. That's the corner of Commonwealth Avenue and Essex Streets. That meeting, again, is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. It's going to take place in room 505 at 871 Commonwealth Avenue. That's the building, I think, sort of directly across the street from Amory Street on Commonwealth Avenue. And again, it's going to be sort of an informational rollout meeting for a performing arts center that the university's thinking about constructing in the general area of 808 Commonwealth Avenue, the old Peter Fuller Building, for those of us who have been around for many years. Next to the Peter Fuller Building, yeah.
It should be an interesting project, an interesting meeting. Any other announcements? It's been interesting, it was what, minus nine degrees on Sunday and today it was in the fifties, a swing of fifty, sixty degrees in just a few days. Quite interesting. I'm going to, Item B is the question of authorizing the Finance Director to refinance certain bonds, and I think we need some staff explanation for that, so I'm going to wait until Mr. Kleckner returns. Item C has been postponed. That's the question of approving the response letter to Mass Development. I'll say to my colleagues, we did receive a draft response, and please get any comments you have to the draft, to Ms. Steinfeld at the Planning Department, and we'll be discussing that next week. We got an, it was on the calendar for this week because the original due date was, I think, by the end of this week. We got an extension until the end of February, so we'll take advantage of that.
That's so the Neighborhood District Commission.
That the Conservation District can weigh in, but also, it'll also allow us a little more time to digest the proposed comments as compiled by the Planning Department. I thought they, for the most part, captured what we heard and what some of, and what we said during our discussion. You know, I'm going to have some suggestions for them, too. So, the next item is the question of signing the warrant for the Presidential Preference Primary, which is taking place March 1st. And there's, so the big thing on the ballot on March 1st is going to be the Presidential Primary, both Republican and Democratic, and that's going to be on what's so-called Super Tuesday with a whole bunch of states. We're one of the few northern states, as I understand it, going on that date. It's mostly southern states, so that should be an interesting day.
And I don't believe there are any changes to the precinct locations, the voting locations across town. I think it's the same as people are used to voting at.
Correct. Yeah, nothing, yeah, there's no changes. That hit me, and they would have been highlighted.
Do we have to determine what will happen when devotion is under construction?
Not for this. That would be for the November, and that's something we can ask Mr. Ward, the town clerk. Okay, so I'm going to move acceptance of the warrant and authorization that we sign it. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And it's our duty to vote, and I hope everyone does. And the debates on both sides, I think, have been quite interesting, no matter where you, no matter how you lean. Okay, the next item, and this is the last item on our miscellaneous calendar, is the question of authorizing the Chair to sign a letter regarding net metering legislation, and I'm going to ask Selectman Heller to kick us off.
Okay.
And I know a town meeting member, Linda Olson Pelkey, is also here to speak to this. So, Selectman Heller.
Okay, so let me give you a little bit of background about this, and then I'll ask Ms. Pelkey to do, present the issues to you. So, this is something that the Climate Action Committee has been working on for a while. Specifically, our member David Escoier has been ponchoing it, but he is away for a couple of months. We greatly miss his expertise on this, but we've muddled through, and we had a committee which helped draft this, some of whom were not actually on the committee, citizens who have a lot of knowledge about it. And so, we have drafted a letter which we hope is fairly self-explanatory. It's a complex subject, but you have to sort of go down and get out of the weeds and get to the overview of it to understand that the concepts are pretty straightforward. There's a lot of legislation on the Hill about this. In fact, you have a chart that was given to you, and some of the, I think, we stayed away from making, writing a letter which talks about a specific piece of legislation. Not all of these pieces of legislation, in our view, are very, are helpful, but some of them have pieces that are fine and some of them don't. So, it was better to start with the overview of what we want, what we hope to end up with in terms of a bill. So, maybe Ms. Pelkey could come up, and she was drafted and graciously agreed to do this.
Substitute for David. Yeah, hi, I'm Linda Olson Pelkey. I'm a member of the Climate Action Committee, and I'm here on their behalf. So, the committee unanimously endorsed the letter you have in your packets at our January 25th meeting. Representative Smysik was at our meeting, and he supported our efforts, and it was his opinion that this was timely and important, that we get this letter out. The Climate Action Committee is asking the Board to adopt and send this letter to our state legislature. I'd also note that the Mass Climate Action Network, whose director is a former town meeting member from Brookline, Carol Oldham, has circulated a draft of this letter and all of its member communities, asking them to adopt similar letters, and Newton has already done so. The Commonwealth is at a critical juncture in regards to our energy future, the outcome of which will ultimately determine whether or not we meet the state policy objectives adopted during the Patrick Administration on Clean Energy, Energy Efficiency, Greenhouse Gas Emission Reductions, and Growing Our Clean Energy Economy, as laid out in our groundbreaking legislation, namely, the Green Communities Act, the Global Warming Solutions Act, and the Greenhouse Gas Initiative. The current state policy and incentive structure for solar energy is about to expire. We are nearing the cap of 1,600 megawatts of solar for the entire state that was set through previous legislation. So far, the legislature has failed to adopt a new framework for solar. The committee and many other clean energy advocates feel strongly that the legislature needs to act soon, or otherwise we will witness the demise of our nascent solar energy economy, and many projects already in the pipeline will never get deployed. Some parts of the state have already reached their caps, and Brookline is perilously close to reaching its cap. The letter requests the legislature to take three specific actions. One, eliminate the caps on net metering. Net metering refers to the mechanism that allows solar energy producers to sell excess energy back to the grid, and I believe there was a graphic showing that in your packet. Currently, producers earn the retail price for energy they produce. The second thing the letter requests is to maintain a fair price for net metering electrical generation. The price paid to producers has become controversial due to utilities' concerns. I believe your packet included a pro forma from the Corey Hill Solar Project that shows that paying a wholesale rate to producers would have made their and many other projects unfeasible. So, what's shown in that pro forma is the difference between the retail rate for net metering and the wholesale rate. And so, with the retail rate, each unit owner earned something like $2,500, and with a wholesale payment rate on the net metering, it goes to negative something, and they would never have undertaken the project had that been the case. And the third request in the letter is to create a new state incentive program for renewable energy credits called SRECs, or State Renewable Energy Credit, which allows renewable energy producers to sell credits to utilities to help them meet their renewable energy portfolio standards. As Nancy said, there are many competing solar bills that are being discussed right now, but we decided to take the tact of just clearly focusing on what Brookline and other communities might want the legislature to do, and to show them that we support continuing on with the deployment of solar energy.
Thank you. I'll comment that I'm fully supportive of this. I have a solar array and are familiar with the SREC program and have been a beneficiary and of net metering. You know, for every megawatt that mine and other solar arrays produce, that's a megawatt not being produced by coal or natural gas or nuclear. It's much cleaner. I think there should be incentives for moving us in this direction, plus it provides employment. It's, to me, all good. So, to me, this is a no-brainer. So, I'm in favor.
Obviously, I am. I was one of the ones who voted unanimously to support, to ask us to do this. I do think that, you know, it's pretty clear, if you look at this pro forma from the Corey Hill condominium, that there's a huge difference in what, in making or breaking the project. And clearly, the project would not have been done without the net metering benefits, and that's what's going to, what we fear would happen all across the state, and not only in Brookline, is that people will cease to look to solar with the degree that they have so far, and we would hope even that that would step up. So, we're hopeful that the legislature will do the right thing, and that's our intent in writing this letter, urge them to do that.
I'll just simply say it's not just about private homeowners.
Right.
We heard last week, or perhaps two Tuesdays ago, about a town, the town's effort to install some solar arrays, and it's my understanding that should this legislation or one of these pieces of legislation not pass, that the town would find it very difficult to install those solar arrays, and the projects wouldn't get off the ground.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. We're ready for motion?
Yeah.
So, I'll move authorization of the Chair to sign the letter. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green. Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Pelkey.
Thank you.
And let's come back to Item B, the refunding of certain bonds. Mr. Cirillo.
I wish it were the refunding, it's the refinancing.
Well, it's technically refunding, that's.
I apologize for being late. I was down at the Advisory Committee. I appeared before you this evening to seek authorization to refinance borrowing that occurred in 2008 and 2009. Those borrowings were specifically for the Town Hall project. I see, looking around at the audience, as usual, I could pack an audience and hang in my.
You know how to fill a room, Mr. Cirillo.
Yeah, I do know how to fill a room. We borrow once a year, and we do that because of the high cost of borrowing. You have several components of it. You have the financial advisor, the bond rating agency, the bond council, a number of other bits, and so it's very expensive to borrow money. And as a result of that, when we try to do it once a year, and at the time we borrow, we usually borrow sometime in the spring, somewhere, anywhere between February and April. At the time leading up to that borrowing, we test the existing borrowings to see if any of them qualify for refinancing. If they're, and when I say qualify, there's a metric out there that basically says that if it's anything less than a 3% savings, then it isn't worth doing because of the cost. In this particular case, we took the opportunity to do the test, as we do every single year, and we found these two borrowings, the 2008 and 2009, that do, in fact, qualify. And over the remaining term of the borrowing, the town would be able to save approximately $660,000. That's an estimate, but that's a pretty good estimate. Now, $660,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it is spread over 11 years and 12 years. So, there's, it's little bits each year over a period of that period of time. Nevertheless, it's $660,000 of savings. And those savings, of course, would increase the capacity of the community based on the financial policies that exist, to either borrow for new projects or increase your pay as you go, because it's all part of that policy for 6% of net revenues dedicated to, from the operating budget dedicated to capital. And so, with that, I recommend that the board of Selectmen authorize me to refinance these bonds.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it does.
Any savings is a good idea.
Yeah.
Selectman Green.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, whenever in an interest rate environment like this, you can, you get rid of some of your old debt that has higher interest rates. I mean, it's sort of a no-brainer. My question, though, is what's the relationship between high borrowing costs and going to market each year? Seems to me that's counterintuitive.
Well, first of all, we go to the market every year. It's our strategic capital plan, is an aggressive plan, and within that 6% policy that I just referred to, that 6% covers debt and pay-as-you-go. And depending on the size of the project, we determine if we would do pay-as-you-go or borrow. With the projects that are before us, most recently the larger school projects, but all the other projects as well, the public safety building, the libraries, the health department, the town hall, all require borrowing. And the only thing that we really control on that is, depending on the amount of borrowing for that specific project, we can determine whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years. So, we are always in the market each year, but what we don't want to do is be in the market and then go out and refinance at a different point in time, because you're still, then you're actually being charged twice for the borrowing cost, borrowing for the regular long-term obligation and borrowing for the refinancing. You want to roll them into one.
Why wouldn't you roll over, or roll into one financing borrowing needs over a two-year period?
The ability to pay. If, first of all, you have an issue with, that you must, if, once you borrow the money, you must spend the money within a limited period of time. That's called arbitrage.
Assuming that you can, you spend down the proceeds within that period of time.
Well, it's not, actually, not as easy as one would think to spend down proceeds. When we borrow money, we have to have a specific plan of expenditure of those borrowings, X percent within six months, X percent within a year, a year and a half, two years.
It's a two-year spend-down period.
Two-year spend-down period.
Okay.
And you also, you also have another issue of the capacity of the building department to maintain and manage all those projects at the same time. So, you're spreading out, you're spreading the financing out, you're spreading the workload out for the management departments who are managing it. The plan is okay. I'm not overly concerned about the cost of refinancing. I'm concerned about if you do it separately from the general borrowing, because then you have to get two Moody's ratings, you have to get two financial advisor payments and so forth. When you roll them in as one act, or one action, it really does reduce the cost.
So, I want to thank you for two things. One, for helping us maintain our AAA bond rating, and second, for being so diligent in closely monitoring the availability of these types of transactions to lower our costs over 11, 12, 15 years, whatever it is in the case of the particular refinancing we're going to do. Some of us up here have observed that the equity markets and the corporate bond market is in a little bit of a disarray right now.
Turmoil.
I'm wondering how the municipal bond market is doing over the first six weeks of the calendar year, and whether you think that the trend of people snapping up our bond issuance is going to continue going forward.
Interesting question. First of all, Massachusetts, Mass General Law, as it regards to borrowing, is interesting in that it requires, it restricts the borrowing to only fixed costs rather than variable rate, which is a benefit to us in the long run, because we don't have these jumps and we could do long-range forecasting and do long-range planning within that 6% annual appropriation over multiple years. Second of all, with the disarray out there, there are some who are leaping to municipal bonding as a life raft. Not many, because some people are still out there taking risks with those corporate bonds, and you could find a greater rate of return, but you have a high, far higher risk level in those corporate bonds. And finally, right now, the bond interest is still quite low. I mean, I was here in the early 2000s and mid-2000s when we were borrowing for 6% and 7%, 8% for AAA paper, and now we're borrowing, a couple of years ago, we were borrowing at 1%. Right now, we're borrowing at about 3%, although there is some math that they have the annual premiums offset, let me just put this correctly, the amount of money you have to pay in principal and interest. When you look at the interest rate, it looks like it's higher in the individual, specific year, but they're giving us a very large upfront payment of a premium, which takes the net interest rate down to 3%. So, we net that out. Matter of fact, we use, we use that premium to pay for our bonding costs. That's how, because bonding costs are not in the operating budget, they're part of the premium assumption that we're getting. So, that said, I anticipate that the net rate will be about 3%, maybe a little higher than 3%. I think that the annual rate, specifically in the first couple of years of the next borrowing that we do, you'll see interest rates, actual interest rates, about 4-plus percent. But again, that's offset by that large premium that they give it, give us at the moment of the sale. So, overall, it's a good deal. People are still lending, willing to lend a AAA money. We're going to be borrowing for at least $15 million in the next couple of weeks, plus a refinancing, plus a ban, so this is going to be an interesting sale in a couple of weeks. I'm looking forward to it, actually.
Well, I'm glad you're going out on a high note.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah.
It's easy to say that. The Moody's conference call is on March 3rd. Melissa Goff is going to be joining me, as well as Michael DePietro, and I've invited the Assistant Town Administrator to join us. I want to give him some experience in this matter. I anticipate the bond sale to be somewhere around March 15th, and, or maybe March 10th, something like that, whatever that is. And then, some Tuesday, between then and the end of the.
You're going to give us a pile of paper.
A pile of paper, in which I apologize, there's no way around that. I have to sign it as well as you do, sign our lives away. But that should be done, all done, before the end of March, and the money should be in our till by the end of March, so.
Well, okay. Any other questions or comments? I will therefore move that we authorize the Finance Director to refinance certain bonds. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're actually running a little ahead of schedule. The next item is a public hearing on a noise bylaw exemption for 111 Cypress Street. We noticed it for 7:45, so I'm going to suggest we take a approximately 12-minute recess. Well, Mr., pronounce your last name.
Patuchus.
Patuchus, okay, Mr. Patuchus.
Good evening. My name is Elias Patuchus. I'm president of the Clermont Companies, where the developer of the Homewood Suites at 111 Boylston Street. We're currently under construction, where we were supposed to open this past February, and unfortunately, we've been delayed just because of the long process to demo the building and the rough winter we had in 2015. However, we are planning on opening in the month of April. Unfortunately, at this time, we still don't have final gas and electric in the building. We're still working on temporary utilities. So, I'm here tonight to request that you grant us a waiver from the noise bylaw to allow the gas company to work in the street overnight. The reason for this is, there is gas in the street, it needs to be brought into our building, and they're able to do part of this work during the day. However, there may be a situation that will not allow them to do this during the day, and in order to keep on track, they'll need to work at night. So, the night work is my backup plan. So the night work is my backup plan in the event they cannot complete what they need to do in a timely fashion during the day. So rather than waiting for that emergency to come up, I'm here before you to ask for your permission so that if I'm informed that, hey, we can only work an hour or two in the street today, or we can't work in the street today, but we can work at night, I'd like to utilize that just to get, get power into the building and gas into the building so we can move forward and, and, and open the property on time.
So usually, for requests like this, we ask, we try to get a, some indication of the impact so neighbors know what to expect. So it's a little hard to predict if you're using this as a backup plan. So what's the worst-case scenario?
So, so they, they've already done their saw cutting in the street, most of it, which happened during the day. So we may need to do some more saw cutting in the street of the, of the asphalt. We may need to cut pipe in the street in the middle of the night. So, but when they do cut pipe, it'll be down in the ground, it'll be pretty far down in the ground, a few feet, several feet, actually. So it could, it could get, it could get noisy. But again, I'm anticipating that we can get this done during the day. I just want to have the flexibility that if I can direct these men to work at night, they can do that.
So if, if they're working, if they're working at night, is it going to be at 3:00 in the morning, or is it going to end at midnight? Or how's it going to work?
It, it would be sometime, the work hours would be from 10:00 to 5:00 a.m.
Oh, so it would be spanning the night?
It, it would, it would. But again, they are not cutting in the street all night. It would maybe be for an hour or two hours, and they'll be down in the, in the, in the ground laying pipe, running pipe. They may need to come back and repatch the road, do the asphalt patching at night, which is not allowed, so that by day, it's, it's ready to be driven on. What I could do is if, if, we'll monitor this closely, and if I know, say, that, you know, the net, if I know that I'll need to work at night, I can, I can shoot an email to the neighbors like we were doing for the demolition that day or the night before and say, we plan to do work in the street tonight, or tomorrow night, here's, here's what we plan on doing, and, and here are the hours we plan on doing it. That's, that's what we would do.
Okay.
And we did this when we, when we demolished 111.
So you don't anticipate that it's going to be two straight weeks of work between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.?
No. Originally, when we put out this request, we, we thought that they were only going to allow nighttime work. We've since got them and worked with Mass DOT to get them to work during the day. So there is a, a chance that we will need this nighttime work, but rather than them telling me they need to work at night and I lose three or four critical days to go through this process here, I'd rather have it upfront, and this way I could react quickly. And I will, as I said, notify the neighbors if we do plan to do any nighttime work and, and give them details on what that will be.
Do you also, how do you, obviously, you're going to be closing the road.
Oh, they put metal plates on the road. After we open it, you mean?
No, I mean, so when you're doing this work.
Right. It'll just be one lane. So there's two lanes on Route 9.
Right.
So it would be work in one of the lanes, and the other lane would be open.
Okay. And, and have you, I've driven by on Route 9 there, and it is kind of a nightmare.
It is.
Especially at the corner of Boylston and Washington, and, yeah, and Washington. You know, it, sometimes the traffic seems to back up on Washington all the way back to Harvard to get by, so.
We apologize for that. We, we, we're trying to get out of the street. Right now, what we're trying to do is get those utilities in, we're trying to finish the facade of the building.
Well, I recognize, you know, that you have to do it, and I'm not, I'm not critical of that. What I, what I'm wondering is, could there more of an effort be made to notify drivers that not a good idea to go down this street today? You know, as we did with, with the, taking the bridge down.
Well, we're kind of at, we're coming to the end of the project at this point.
Yeah, but, you know.
We do have, thanks, thanks to, to Brookline Police Department, we've had traffic details there every day and on Saturdays as well, and they've been great. And they're keeping one lane, two lanes, and when we can't have two lanes, one lane open for traffic and doing a great job directing traffic. So they've been, they've been with us since the beginning, and they've done a great job.
If, if you have to work at night, is there some way that you could schedule the work so that the loudest pieces of it are done in the earlier part of the night?
We will, we will do everything we can to do that. I, I can say that, you know, the demolition process, which was pretty tough, I'm sure you all remember that building that was there, it was a tough concrete building right on the tracks, and, you know, we, we held good relationship with, with the neighbors and trying to do that during the right time, and there was certain stuff we could only do when the T was closed at 11:00 at night to 4:00 in the morning. And as well, I think that went, and, and I, and I, and I would, you know, talking to the neighbors, they, they felt that went as well as it, it could have gone. So, yeah, we're going to do everything we can to, to keep the noise down, do it early so as, to be as least disruptive to the neighborhood as possible. We have a lot invested in this neighborhood, and we want to keep everybody happy.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this noise bylaw waiver? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name's Allison Sennick. I'm a Brookline resident. I live on Leverett Street, which just is right across the park from where the construction is taking place.
Which, which street, I'm sorry?
Leverett Street.
Leverett.
It's right off of Route 9. It's the construction and then that green, that green space, the park, and then Leverett Street.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. I've lived there since the construction began. I lived there through the demolition, and I have to say, I'm surprised that the residents may have saying that this has been going as well as it could, because to be completely honest, this has been very difficult to live through. I've gone through several weeks of overnight work with, especially with the demolition, where there was a very large jackhammer on top of the concrete roof, jackhammering until 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. At the time, I am a nurse. At the time, I was a pediatric cardiac ICU nurse, rotating between days and nights. So regardless of when I could sleep, there was, there was noise going on. It was very difficult. I tried to contact several people here at the building department, was kind of given the answer that this is just how it is because of the T, we can only work, which I understand. Then more recently, I, there was overnight work for Comcast. I was told that the cables broke, underlying that we're, I guess, supplying, I think, the hotel, that it was emergency work, they're only given permission to work at night for emergency work. Representative at Comcast actually called me, saying that they had offered to work on a Sunday during the day, and they were denied. It didn't really seem like emergency work to me as it started, I don't remember the exact day, but then did not continue until four days later. To me, that's not an emergency. The street has been one lane for a year. I don't see how keeping it one way during the day and working during the day on this gas is going to, even if it extends the project, which according to the signs was supposed to be complete this past December, three or four more days of having to do day work and keeping the residents being able to sleep at night and attending their jobs and performing at their jobs during the day, three or four extra days, to me, is not much of a consequence. So I asked that, I understand that emergencies happen. If it's an emergency, by all means, do what you have to do, especially with gas, but to work overnight and disrupt the neighbors, I know that there was, at the time with the demo, there was foundation issues with people on Davis Street, that they were worried about their foundation. Me with the noise, me at the Comcast, even just with the lights, they were shining through my bedroom and keeping me awake, it's right there. And I just ask that, that be considered when you make your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do you know anything about the Comcast thing? Was that for your project?
I don't, I don't. I know, I know we've had Comcast working there. I did not know that they were working at night.
Because I, I don't recall a bylaw waiver for Comcast.
No, we didn't have one. If it's, the bylaw does address emergency work, and I'm told that that's what the determination was, but I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
I have, I have a concern about what you're requesting. You're asking for a start date of tomorrow and going through Wednesday, March 2nd, so that's basically two weeks. It seems to me that that's a long time, and that's a very broad waiver. And that if we were to give you a waiver, we should limit it to, you know, two or three nights. Because that, at least then, you know, people wouldn't have to suffer day in, day, day in and day out, because obviously, the work is always going on during the day. So people who work at night and sleep during the day are impacted. And then, you know, you're, you're doing it all night, too. I think that's really tough. So I would prefer to limit it to, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to choose which nights. I obviously don't have the expertise and don't know to, how to do that. But I think that should be done in consultation with our DPW.
Is, is there a limitation that you could live with, cutting down the window?
Sure, sure. I, I think, could we, could we agree to five nights? Can we agree to just five nights? And I'm not saying it would be consecutive nights, it could be one night, and then, you know, they do some day work, and then if we have to do night work again? I, I don't, it would either be five consecutive nights or five nights in different, you know, maybe every other day, I'm not sure. Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of this, the gas company, and as much as we try to get them to-
It's no fun.
Get them, you know, get them there in, in the morning and work all day, and then we have Mass DOT we have to deal with because it's a, it's a state, Route 9 is Mass DOT's jurisdiction. So I, um, five nights, I, I understand everyone's concern, and, and I understand your concern, and we're, we're, we're sorry you had to deal, deal with that during demolition. But if I could get fi, your approval for five nights and we'll notify the neighbors in advance, that, that would be very helpful.
And then how much notice would you give them? 24 hours?
Would 24 hours be okay?
I mean, you know, it's, it's not great, but obviously-
I'm hoping I won't need to use this, and I'm hoping we, we only need one or two nights, but these people are so unpredictable. I mean, they tell you they're going to be there one day, they don't show up three days later, and, and you just, I, I need to have-
We all know what that's like.
It's, it's, and-
And then you, we're also, you're also dealing with winter and-
We're dealing with winter and, you know, I mean, they were supposed to be there last Monday, and they didn't show up because of the snow. Well, it didn't start snowing until 1:00 in the afternoon. I mean, that's the kind of stuff, stuff we're dealing with. And every day that goes by, it's, it, it just delays opening, and it costs us money, it costs the town lots of money in revenue and taxes and room taxes, and just trying to keep this project going and get it open on time.
Okay, so, um-
So five nights with 24-hour notice to the neighbors for each night.
Right. And, and the five nights can be nights between, starting when?
My, my, just, I think-
Because you're asking for tomorrow through March 2nd. What's reasonable? You expecting tomorrow to be?
No, 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 no. As of last week, I was, but as of, as of this morning, no. So I, I would say the earliest we would need to start working there would be, say, Thursday. So we would, if we were to work there Thursday, I'd have to notify the residents tomorrow.
So 28, so it would be a maximum of five nights, starting from Thursday, February 18th, through Wednesday, March 2nd, 24 hours' notice to the neighbors. And the hours for the waiver would be 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and it's only Monday through Friday.
10, 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
5:00, yeah. And it's only Monday through Friday, it would not be on weekends.
Right.
So the motion would be for, to approve a noise bylaw waiver for a maximum of five nights, starting the 18th of February, ending Wednesday, March 2nd, for the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., Monday through Friday only.
24-hour notice.
And with 24 hours' notice.
Right.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to the next item is a question of approving the application of New England Treatment Accessing, doing business as NEDA. Amanda Rosatano, manager, holder of a licensed operator, registered marijuana dispensary at 160 Washington Street, for a change in security manager, from Arnon Vered to Michael G. Connolly.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Rosatano.
So I'm here tonight to introduce Michael Connolly, who will be replacing, as you said, Arnon Vered, our current interim security manager and also our executive director, as our security manager. Mike has been with our organization in a security role since February of last year. He was the security supervisor for our Franklin facility, was working directly under our security director at that time, and has since been working very closely with myself and with Arnon, our executive director, to be fully up to speed to take over the role. He's got a, you know, eight-year background in the security industry, is a valued NEDA employee, and we hope that you will approve his application tonight.
I note that the application has been approved by the police department. Any questions, comments from the board?
Also, if I, if I may, just, just make the point that, that Mike has gone through the state background check, which is required by the Department of Public Health. He's been, he's gone through the Brookline background check required here by the town, which is that the FBI fingerprint background check. He has also gone through a, an independent third-party background check through our security consultant, Ned Davis, as well.
Right.
He's clear.
Clear enough, clear enough. Are we ready for a motion?
I'm, I'm curious about something, and that is that you've been working, as I understand it, at the facility in Franklin?
That's correct.
So are you commuting?
Um, I reside in Worcester, and I'm commuting to Franklin, and I'm also dividing my time between the Northampton and Brookline dispensaries.
So you're living in the middle.
Right. Located right in the halfway point between the two dispensaries.
Plus Franklin.
And Franklin.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. Sure.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the application of New England Treatment Access, doing business as Neta. Amanda Rosatano, manager, holder of a licensed operator, registered marijuana dispensary at 160 Washington Street, for a change in security manager, as follows. Arnon Vered to Michael G. Connolly. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep us safe. Next item is the question of approving the application of Pizzeria Dante LLC, David Dragani, manager for a common vitula license at 415 Harvard Street. Yes, sir, please introduce yourself.
Excuse me. I'm David Dragani, the owner of Pizzeria Dante. I've been in Brookline for seven years, and I'm just relocating.
Okay. You're not going too far.
No, just around the corner.
Right. Is the operation, the state, pretty much the same?
Just about exactly the same.
So this is mostly a takeout business, is that correct?
Yeah, mostly, yeah.
You only have nine seats, you probably-
Yeah, that's about all I need. But I'd rather, I'd rather be packed, that's a good problem to have.
Right. This isn't a public hearing, but if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application, I'll take public comment. And I see none. Come on up. Come on, up to the podium.
My name is Charles Robinson. I am a Brookline resident. I moved here to Brookline in 1943. My late wife and I were at the first day there when Pizzeria Dante opened, seven years ago. And they're in a place where, during a period of about five or six years before Dante opened, there were four or five restaurants that came and went. And here's David with Pizzeria Dante, he's been there seven years, it's beautiful, and it's, it's a wonderful outfit, wonderful restaurant. And I look forward to Pizzeria Dante still being, like we said, around the corner, still being there in Brookline.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none. Are we ready for a motion? So I will move that we approve the application of Pizzeria Dante, David Dragani, close enough.
That's good.
Manager for a common vitula license at 415 Harvard Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck at your new location. The next item is an open-air parking license. This is a public hearing on the application of 56 Harvard Avenue LLC. Karen Langsner, manager for a license to conduct and maintain an open-air parking lot for 14 vehicles at forty, 56 Harvard Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Karen Langsner.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to apply for the parking license.
Okay. So is this, is this, is this new, or just a change of ownership?
Change of ownership, yeah.
So there's no change in-
No change at all.
In the lot, and, okay. So I'll note that the building department has reviewed the application, approved, the fire department has reviewed the application and approved, the police department has approved the applic, has reviewed the application and approved it. Any comments from the board, questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? I see none.
So let me ask, you don't live at this house next to the parking lot?
I do not.
Okay, so you're an outside investor.
I'm sorry?
So you're just an outside investor?
I am.
Have you had any complaints in the last year?
I only have owned the property since January 15th.
Okay.
Since then, I've had no complaints. I mean, January 15th.
So, do you know if there were any complaints prior to that?
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I'll note the Butters would have received notice, and also town meeting members. Okay, we're ready for a motion? I'll move that we approve the application of 56 Harvard Av, LLC, Karen Langsner, manager for a license to conduct and maintain an open-air parking lot for 14 automobiles at 56 Harvard Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is for an all kinds package store, and this is a public hearing on the application of Anastasi Brookline Inc., doing business as Brookline Fine Wine and Gourmet, Anastasios Gianopolis.
Very well.
Okay.
Excellent.
Owner and holder of a license to sell wine and malt beverages as a retail package goods store, 27 Harvard Street, for a license to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages as a retail package goods store in the name of Anastasi Brookline Inc., doing business as Brookline Fine Wine Spirits, Anastasios Gianopolis at 27 Harvard Street. Wow, that's a lot of words.
Hi, thank you for having us today. We came before you many years ago.
And you're Mr.-
Gianopolis, I'm sorry.
Gianopolis, okay.
Anastasios Gianopolis, this is Joseph Ferraro. And we came many years ago, there was an empty spot at 27 Harvard Street, for a long time that was vacant. We came and applied, we were granted a beer and wine license, went through everything, built up the spot really, really beautifully. I don't know if you've had a chance to come in. Have built a great rapport with the neighborhood over the last seven years, almost. I'm sure from the police report, we went through everything, and we've had, you know, every year when they do the investigations, we've never had any issues across the board with anything. Take it with incredible pride of what we're doing, and this opportunity came about now to be able to, we get a lot of requests for the piece that we're missing in that business, which is the spirits side. We have, we run a very boutique-type establishment, and it definitely goes with a lot of the things that we have, with the little foods and the, the beverages that we carry, the, you know, the, everything's hand-selected from Joseph. So this is a very nice fit for us, and because the opportunity came about, we, we applied, hoping to be in front of you as we are to hopefully get granted that.
Well, it's a good thing that you haven't been before us-
Yes.
-on any of those things.
Over seven years, yes.
I'll note that the health department has approved with its standard conditions, and the police department has reviewed the application and approved it. Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? I see none. And are we ready for a motion? I think so. Wow.
Let me just ask a question. So you have no need to expand in order to bring in this new merchandise?
No, we're, we're gonna keep it, like I said, we, we survive on a niche item, so we're gonna keep it very small in hand-selected items. By no means are we competing with any box stores or anything. It's not who we are, it's not what the village is. It's definitely not what we're trying to do. So we're not looking for any expansion, any more space, any different signage, anything other than the name change, which we applied for. Yeah, so the answer is no, there's no extra space.
I noticed you hold a, you hold a license in a neighboring community. Is that an all kinds license, or is it just a beer and malt beverage?
It's an all kinds license. Again, no issues with that over many years. I've actually been doing this for almost 20 years, and Joseph also, so we come with a lot of experience and, and history in this, so we're very proud to be here.
And I note that you've held a wine and beer license for a while now with no issues. Usually, I and my colleagues will, will do a lecture on how important, how seriously we take enforcement of our alcohol laws, but-
Of course.
You've been, you've been subjected to that lecture, and you've, you've walked the walk by the fact that you haven't been before us in any violations, so I don't have to do that.
Thank you.
So I will-
Could you just tell me what your hours are? I can't really see-
Currently, right now, we applied for the hours allotted by law, but we only do 10 to 10, and then on the Friday, Saturday, we do till 11. But the application was for full hours, just in case, which is till 11. But we don't foresee changing those.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to move that we approve the application of Anastasi Brookline Inc., doing business as Brookline Fine Wine and Gourmet, Anastasios Gianopolis, owner, holder of a license to sell wine and malt beverages as a retail package store, 27 Harvard Street, for a license to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages as a retail package goods store in the name of Anastasi Brookline Inc., doing business as Brookline Fine Wine and Spirits, Anastasios Gianopolis at 27 Harvard Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I will also move that we approve the application of Anastasi Brookline Inc., doing business as Brookline Fine Wine and Spirits, Anastasios Gianopolis, owner of an all-kind alcohol beverage license as a package goods store at 27 Harvard Street, for the appointment of Joseph Ferraro as manager. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you do.
Sure. Next item is a, a, a public hearing on the question of approving the application of Casey Hannan LLC, doing business as Granny O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, member, manager for a common vitula license at 201 Harvard Street. And this is the Carib Pub. So why don't you introduce yourself, and tell us what's going on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Bill Gardner, I'm an attorney representing Casey Hannan LLC. With me here tonight is Marcella Walsh on the right, and Marie Mackey on the left. They are the sole owners of the LLC, they are, they're gonna be the operators of what is now the Cora Pub, if the approvals are granted. Both, I, I heard your reference a moment ago about the seriousness with which the town of Brookline takes the enforcement of the alcohol license, laws and regulations in the town. My clients were a little bit proactive in this regard when they were thinking about this, and soon after we signed the contract of the asset purchase, they went to the seminar that Lieutenant Hayes has last October, with respect to the education, I guess you would say, of, of how the laws are interpreted and enforced and administered here in the town of Brookline. So that they have gone through that. Both of them have been in the service industry and the food and restaurant business probably most of their adult lives. I think you can see from the packet that they have certifications on many, many levels, the tips, the safe serve, CPR, they have crowd control, they each have those. They had an individual meeting with Lieutenant Hayes last Tuesday, which reinforced what they, they learned or picked up from the general meeting at the seminar that they went to last October. So overall, both Marie and Marcella have worked in downtown Boston for over 10 years, and are familiar with much of the problems and difficulties that you encounter in this type of business. They, and they've, they have the experience, they have the know-how, and they have the, the energy, so to speak, to, to make something work here. Their intent for the, for the, for the location at 201 Harvard Street is to pretty much maintain the operation for, for the current time, as it is. We, we've asked for a common vituums license and an entertainment license, which have pretty much mirrored what the current licenses look like. We, we've had some discussions with the building department about what we can do and what we can't do down the road, but I, I think the intent at this point is to maintain the status quo, to get in there, run, run the operation, get a feel for what the community is looking for in this type of, in this type of operation, this type of restaurant. Most particularly with respect to, you know, how they, how they want to run, what type of entertainment, if any, that they would be looking for. And the menu, you have a copy of the sample menu in there. It's a 99-seat capacity at the location. We gave you the, the basic menu that they would look for, for Grany O'Malley's Tavern. It's a, Grany is a-
Grany, I said granny.
Yeah.
Or granny.
That's what most people do, does Mr. Chairman-
So I apologize.
We're hoping it'll be a conversation piece, that'll get, get people interested enough to come up with-
Grany.
Grany, it's an Irish word. And I think it's been anglicized over the years to Grace, Grace O'Malley. She's a-
Not granny.
Yeah, historical figure in Irish history from the 16th century. She was one of the first strong women who was a chieftain of a clan, the O'Malley Clan in Ireland. And there's a long history that hopefully will get the public interested to come in and ask questions about whether or not they want to hear the story. Ultimately, I, I, I put forth here that my clients, the two, that they will be hands-on. This is in a situation where they're just investing funds and hoping that they can hire somebody to run it. What they've done themselves for the, for most, for all of their adult working life has been to run restaurants and bars for other people. Now they're gonna branch out and hopefully become a fixture here in the Brookline community and do it for themselves, and they're definitely looking forward to it.
I noticed, there's a, are the hours that you're applying for the same as in the current license?
Yes.
There's a little oddity, where the, the Saturday closing is earlier than the, than the Sunday or the weekday closings. That's, that's a little unusual.
We, we thought the, we had the same thought when we saw it, but rather than seek to change it or rock the boat, we decided to go with what you had approved previously. If-
Yeah, what is there? Well, I don't, I don't think any of us were on the board when that happened, so.
If you're willing to go to 2 AM, we'd be glad to do it.
I'm not sure it was noticed.
Yeah, well, we, we didn't notice that, so that would be, you'd have to come back, I think. We got an email from one of your, one of the current establishment's patrons.
A very loyal patron.
Right. And, and actually, I, I've been to the Carib many times. I'm not, I wouldn't call myself a regular. But I'll, I'll just, it's, it's short, but I'll read it. "Many of us who live in Brookline have joined the Carib and appreciate the people who work there. Suggestion we have, if possible, is to have the Carib staff continue to work at Grany O'Malley's Tavern. This idea could be a win-win for all. The new business would have competent staff built into their new endeavor. The community would like to support this kind gesture from a new restaurant in town. Staff would continue in the work they love, where they know the customers and the community." And I, I'll just vouch that it is a welcoming place, and it's a place where people know your name. So, kind of in the Cheers tradition, so I, I throw that out to you for food for thought, and something-
We just haven't met everybody yet.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Menu looks good.
This is a public hearing, and if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, now is your time. And I see none.
I'm wondering if you could clue us in on some of your potential future plans. Are you thinking of giving the, the restaurant a facelift, or?
Yes. Initially, no structural changes, but a facelift is probably the, the best way, to put it, Selectman Franco. We're talking about paint, you know, definitely cleaning the place up, changing the paint, maybe some wall coverings, which are, I guess, decorative, not wallpaper per se, but, you know, they, they would depict scenes. For instance, I've seen, they depict scenes from Irish history, or something along those lines. Something like that they've looked into. Inside the establishment, I, I understand is, and old is- Inside the establishment, I understand, is an old, is glass brick dividing wall, which goes back to, I assume, the old smoking day, smoking on one side and no smoking on the other. The intent would be, in the application, to remove that and open the place up so that they could get a much more open-area-type feel to it. Those are the types of things they're looking at now, decorations. I think in many, many respects, they want to get in and get a feel for it and see what they can come back. We have had some discussions with Mr. Bennett about, you know, what would be permissible out there, what wouldn't be permissible, and he's been very helpful, so I think we'll probably revisit Mr. Bennett and see if, what we think we can do out there and what we can't. One thing we do have to do is change the sign. By contract, we have to change the sign at some point, which I understand we have to go back through the process.
Do you foresee closing for a period of time, just for these minor changes?
I don't think so. Yeah, that's, at this point in time, we'd like to get in and get going. We understand from other folks we've spoken to and my own experience that there could be delays at the A, B, C, C level, so we, they're chomping at the bit to get going, so I don't anticipate, at this point in time, closing down for any significant period of time.
I know that your potential renovation plans aren't formal at this point. I would urge you to maybe think about opening up the bathrooms a little bit. They're a little bit cramped, and as the Selectman's representative on the Commission for the Disabled, they are certainly not handicapped accessible. So expand your customer base by sort of allowing the bathrooms to be more accessible to upper class patients, patrons.
Yeah, that issue hasn't come up, and we'll definitely look into it as we go along.
Yeah, actually, it would come up if you, depending on the level of renovations, you do, then you might have to do it.
Some of it's a cause factor at this point, too. It's their first venture.
Any other comments? So you've heard the lecture on how seriously we take enforcing our alcohol laws on underage drinking and serving underage and over-serving, so just be aware of that. And hopefully you won't have to come back for any kind of those proceedings.
On that line, we'll clue you in that we do do undercover stings. We send in somebody without an ID who looks like they're twenty-one but isn't, and we do administrative checks of the logbook, so we take it very, very seriously. So now you're warned, and we hope not to see you back here for an enforcement action.
And I think in many other communities, we see it, you don't get the level of education that Lieutenant Hayes has undertaken, which you folks probably know much better than I do. It's helpful. At least we know what the rules are and how they're enforced.
Okay, we ready for motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I am going to move that we approve the application of Casey Hannan, LLC, Doing Business as Grany O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, Member, Manager for a Common Vitula License at 201 Harvard Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I will now move the application of Harvard Lounge and Restaurant, Inc., Doing Business as Carib Pub of Brookline, Hubert Bligh, President, Holder of an all-kind alcoholic beverage license as a common vitualler at 201 Harvard Street for the transfer of said license to Casey Hannan, LLC, Doing Business as Grany O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, Member, Manager. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And I will now move that we approve the application of Casey Hannan, LLC, Doing Business as Grany O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, Manager, Member, Manager, Holder of an all-kind alcoholic beverage license as a common vitualler at 201 Harvard Street, appointing Marie Mackey as manager and appointing Marcella Walsh as alternative manager. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and there's more. I will now move that we approve the application of Casey Hannan, LLC, Doing Business as Grany O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, Member, Manager, Holder of an all-kind alcoholic beverage license as a common vitualler at 201 Harvard Street for a pledge of said license to Harvard Lounge and Restaurant, Inc. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And lastly, thank goodness, I will move that we approve the application of Casey Hannan, LLC, Doing Business as Grany O'Malley's Tavern, Marie Mackey, Member, Manager, Holder of an all-kind alcoholic beverage license as a common vitualler at 201 Harvard Street for an entertainment license to include radio, tape, music, and television. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And now, for the moment of truth, the unveiling of the 2017 financial plan.
We're going to just set up a, for a presentation, and we'll be with you shortly.
I'm going to-
The entire audience has disappeared.
They died.
They died of full of rope.
Right. Fascinating stuff. By the way, I'm going to just show you something that we're going to be monitoring.
Amazing. Still being-
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that, yep, I saw that. But then, less than it was ten years ago.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Thank you, Austin. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's our pleasure this evening to present for the first time the proposed budget for fiscal 2017. We call the budget our financial plan for a lot of good reasons. It's not just a budget of numbers, but it truly represents a financial plan for both fiscal seventeen and the long term. So I have had an opportunity this morning to, or earlier this evening, I should say, to present to the advisory committee, so I think I'm prepared for many questions at this, at that point. So let me, if I could, I'm going to give the overview, the summary, which really is represented in the section one of the document, and then Melissa Goff will follow me with some more details. This budget is, represents $291 million of revenues and expenses that are balanced. When I say all-in, it means all of the enterprises and other self-supporting operations, which are sometimes separate funds, but all of that represents a 4.1% increase over last year fiscal 2016. In this budget, the school budget itself increases by 5%, municipal budgets by 2.5% as a collective group. Capital budget is fully funded with our policy of meeting at least seven and a half percent of prior year net revenue, and in the case, in this case, it's 7.9%. We'll go over that in more detail. Our enterprises are up by 4.4%, and this budget complies with all of our goals and policies around reserves and long-time liability costs. This budget is the second year of a three-year plan to fund the school department, the increasing enrollment within the school department, as you well know, because you adopted the three-year override funding plan. What this second year does in particular is it raises the remaining $1.465 million that's available from the override vote last year, and it also proposes a companion non-tax revenue and cost efficiency package of $1 million, both of which are going to the school department to fund their enrollment needs and other needs over the next year. And this is the table that you'll see that represents this three-year framework. It's a $10 million overall plan, of which seven point, nearly 7.7, was from a tax override. We appropriated, or, yeah, appropriated 6.2 million of the 7.6 million dollars in year one, or last year, fiscal year 2016. This coming year, we are going to appropriate the remaining amount of that override to $1,465, and also raise or create budget capacity up to $1 million. That represents both non-property tax revenue, but also cost efficiencies on the municipal side. And then in the third year, we will raise another 1.29 million or create budget capacity in that amount to make up the $10 million for that three-year period. This is just a table that depicts both the revenues and the expenditures on one page. You have that document or that table in your, both in your presentation and in your, in the financial plan, so I won't dwell on that, but just to say that the budget is balanced, it's a, represents a $291,415,000 overall plan, representing a 4.1% increase. And we'll go over these budget categories in some detail following this slide. So let's look at the revenues to start. This is a revenue pie chart that shows the various elements of the revenue structure of the town's budget. We've reached 70% in property taxes. Overall, property tax is growing as part of the revenue pie, as state aid and other things are going down, but this is 70% property tax. Our next highest revenue category is our enterprises, which offset the expenditures. Our local receipts are on 8.2% and state aid, a little less than 7%, and heading down as a percentage of our overall revenue pie. So let's go into each of the revenue categories. Our property taxes, as just mentioned, is $204 million, representing over two-thirds, but in fact, 70%, more specifically of the town's overall revenue. This represents a 4.6% increase in the overall property tax, even though 2.5% is created by Proposition 2.5, we also have some other components. So last year, we had a base levy of $193 million. We added that, we are going to add to that the $1,465 that we're capturing in the property tax in year two, for a total property tax levy limit of $195 million. We're taking 2.5% of that. We're also adding what we project to be the new construction, or things that haven't yet been taxed yet in the town, and Proposition 2.5 lets you tax those in the first year, become part of the base after that. That's $2,650,000. And then the remaining amounts are, amounts that are temporary taxes, they're a part of the debt exclusions, and they will go away when the debt is retired on those projects. So all told, $204 million of property tax for fiscal seventeen.
Are there any extraordinary items in new growth, such as any assumptions on Brookline Place?
Go ahead.
There's a couple of things going on with new growth. We usually have a base of about 1.8 million, and then on top of that, we have an assumption for a conversion of what was formerly a pilot into a 121A, and that's about $350,000. And then the balance is a combination of the Red Cap site and Brookline Place.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. So moving on to state aid. State aid, we're projecting to go up by about 3.7%. There's two main elements of state aid. The first is a smaller of those, and that's called unrestricted general government aid, and that's increasing by 252,000, or 4.3% increase, and it reflects the governor's commitment to tie local aid to consensus revenue projections. And by that, what I mean is, the governor made a commitment that, at least for this category of aid, whatever revenue increases the state experiences, they will also share with the local government. So what has been referred to as revenue sharing, or a state and local partnership, that's represented in the unrestricted general government aid, which we, as a group of municipalities, feel pretty good about, because we've long been telling the state that we're partners with you, and if your revenues go up, we, you know, we kind of expect to go up, and when they go down, we can go down as well. And that is really the first time, I think, that a commitment has been made like that, so that's fairly significant. Unfortunately, the larger of our aid categories, which is Chapter 70, education aid, does not grow at that level. That $429,000 increase is primarily just the foundation budget growth as a result of enrollment. So the state creates a per pupil expenditure as part of the foundation budget, and then increases communities based on how many students they have. Now, obviously, we have more students than we had before, so we're seeing some growth in that. What we aren't seeing is the growth of the experience in the last few years. You may recall, we talked about the state having to meet a 17.5% threshold of how much they appropriate towards a local education, public education, and we've been far lower than that 17.5%, and so the state had to catch up. And so in the last, I believe, three years, we have seen a higher-than-average increase in our Chapter 70, but the state has nearly reached that 17.5% threshold for Brookline, and so as a result, we're just faced with a minimum aid. One of the things we do at this time of year, we're always trying to read the political tea leaves at the state level to figure out whether this budget that the governor submitted is meaningful and realistic as we go forward, because in Massachusetts, the governor and the House and the Senate all have sort of equal opportunity to submit a budget and get it passed. And so although the governor goes first, it's not always the case that the governor's budget is going to be the one that we rely on, but I think in this, in this year, we believe that the governor's budget does represent a realistic starting point and probably will not go below that, probably not go much above that either, to be honest, but you never know, but we feel comfortable with this number, whereas some years, we make some other assumptions and try to-
Yeah, I remember in some years, the legis, key legislators declare the governor's budget DOA, and there've been no rumblings like that at all.
No, not at all. In fact, I believe both the governor and I believe the Speaker of the House have indicated that, you know, there will be no new taxes, so sometimes that will play into that. But this year, we believe the governor's budget is probably close to what is going to be appropriated at the end of the day. Local receipts, there, we're experiencing local receipts up by about 1.1%, but you'll find that that's the point that Melissa just made, is that it's over, I guess understated, because this pilot is, there's a pilot that used to be paid by Village Way, which is the multifamily housing development down in the village, and it was the 121A agreement, so to speak, which was reflected as a pilot, payment and load taxes, has expired, and it will now become part of the town's property tax base, and that was part of that new growth calculation. So new growth's a little higher than what you would normally see, and local receipts is a little lower because of, because of this.
Which, which, in which scenario are we better off in terms of revenue?
So the pilot agreement was for $525,000, and the estimate for new growth is $350,000. So we were- So we were better off under the 121A.
Well, thank you, Steve Cirillo.
Yes. And then the one new agreement, which I know you were directly involved in, is the host community agreement for the registered marijuana dispensary, and that, as you recall, was a 3 percent of gross revenue that was split between the town and its Brookline Community Foundation. Our 3 percent will go towards the, to the general fund, to fund local services, and it is projected to start off at about $125,000. In fiscal '17, it will go up, and we have a schedule going up, but for '17, it's $125,000, and that's all new money. We also see good growth in the lodging and meals local option tax. We're increasing that by 6.6 percent. Most of that increase is related to the Red Cab site, the hotel that you were talking about earlier this evening. Lodging, both lodging and meals taxes will accrue from that development. But I think overall, you see the local option taxes on lodging and meals, the building permits going up by 4.3, and the motor vehicle excise at 2.8 are a sign of a, of a growing, and at least, at least a stabilizing economy, if not a growing economy, and that results in increases in local receipts of the town.
Does, does the permit number include Brookline Place? That should be a big one.
So we use a five-year rolling average for building permits, so.
So no.
We'll catch up.
But we'll see it in the actuals and roll into free cash, okay.
And Cleveland Circle as well, right?
Yeah, that one won't be quite as big.
What is big, but it's meaningful enough.
Right, yeah.
So moving on to our free cash revenue. Free cash, we project using, we recommend using $5.31 million of free cash for this, and as you all know, our free cash use is limited to one-time funds, mostly the capital budget. Our total certified free cash is actually $7.8 million, which is $2.5 million more than what we're recommending being appropriated, and that is directly attributable to our unreserved fund balance policy that was adopted a few years ago, which really puts a priority on having our unreserved, our unreserved fund balances at 10 percent or greater. We saw our unreserved fund balance dip almost below 10 percent this past year, partly to do with all the snow and ice expenses, so it was more of a timing thing, but we think it's so important to get that back up, and so $2.5 million, leaving that unappropriated in the town's unreserved fund balance, we think will, will meet that goal and make our bond rating agencies and others happy, keep our AAA bond rating. I'll talk more about the use of the free cash when we get to the expenditure side of the ledger. Other available funds, parking meters, you probably will think about as a local receipt, and in fact, they are local receipts, but a law requires a parking meter revenues to be segregated into a separate fund, and what we do then is just then certify them as other available funds that get into the general fund, but in itself, it's not technically a local receipt. But this is the area where we recommend an increase in the parking meter rate from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five per hour, which would result in about $850,000 worth of revenue, and that is the bulk of the $1 million that we've talked about in non-property tax revenue. We targeted that for year two, in fiscal '17, because we knew it would take us some time to develop the companion part of this project, which is to modernize the meter technology, which is essential for making that commitment. We're also looking at the typical reimbursements from the enterprise funds for general government-related costs, that's coming in the other available funds category. The important thing we'd like to let you know about is, we have been on a process of increasing the recreation revolving funds cost recovery, and we've reached that limit, we believe, and so you will not see any increasing revenue attributable to the recreation revolving fund, and we'll talk about that on the expenditure side as well. So let's move to the expenditures, and this is a pie chart, which we always will show you two pie charts, but this one's the one I'm going to show you right now, and this follows the program budget categories. But as you know, the actual categories, especially on the school department, get loaded with other costs from other parts of the budget, so, you know, health insurance or other, other parts of the budget get added on, and so we'll show you a chart later that shows you the all fully loaded costs, but at least this is what's represented in the actual program budgets that you will see. School department being around 35 percent, the municipal departments are 24.5, and then the other categories. Non-departmental is a large source, and that's where, that's including pensions and, and the health insurance, and that's where you'll see those, that category of expenses then get loaded onto the other departments, especially the school department, to make that a much larger piece of pie than what you see there. So moving into the expenditures, so let's talk about the school department budget. It is up by 5 percent, so that is the result of the override plan, the two-year override plan, which talks about recapturing, or capturing that remaining $1.5 million in the override vote, also the $1 million in non-property tax and cost efficiencies, half of that which would have otherwise gone to the town for its services, because as you know, the town school partnership formula shares revenue, revenue 50-50. But this year, well, as part of the override plan, we're making exceptions to that. This year, the superintendent of schools through the deputy superintendent has actual report in this plan, and it's not always the case, so you should refer to this, the report that's in this plan for more details. Our municipal departments are growing collectively by 2.5 percent. It's really, really to cover our fixed costs and contractual increases. This department, this group of departments, and I should have also mentioned the school department, includes within it, incorporated within the budget bottom line is a reserve for salary and wage increases. So you know, we have a budget allocated in our, in our budget for salary and wage increases for those contracts that haven't been negotiated yet, or are in, are in some litigation. There is very limited initiatives in the municipal departments because of this constraint on our budget this year. We really did very little. I don't think we have any permanent increases in personnel and staffing. We have one initiative as pay-as-you throw, which I'll get into a bit, but really the only couple of budgets that really experienced any significant increase is the town clerk's budget, which is on a cycle to have more elections in fiscal '17, so we have to reflect that in part-time temporary wages. And also, we have put more funding in the legal department's budget for outside council services. I was just talking to the advisory committee, where they just supported your request for transfer, and we don't see that really changing much anytime soon because of the litigation issues that we're dealing with, which I'll get into in a bit. But what we have decided to do is put all that amount in the legal department and have them manage it. Some of them are HR-related litigation, but our feeling is, we'd like to try to manage that a little bit better and more coordinated, and so we've put all that additional funding of how much, $100,000 in the legal department's budget. Moving on to non-departmental, non-departmental, which is a very large part portion of our budget, and you'll see the categories here. Group health insurance is a very large expense of the town. We are projecting a 7.5 percent composite rate increase for the plans that we belong to, which are administered by the group insurance commission at the state level. That's a big increase, it's the biggest we've had in many years, and I think it's representative of the kind of healthcare inflation, cost inflation that you're seeing rearing its head again. As the economy was down, there was a period of low inflation, but now we're seeing much higher prescription drugs is leading that charge. And so this is a guess, we don't know the rate until March, early March, even though I serve on the group insurance commission, I can't get any inside information, even though I try every week to try and ask different people, I don't get, they're very closed lip about that, because they're in negotiations with their various carriers. But I'm, I'm in the, I'm at this point believing that 7.5 percent is a conservative but realistic experience, and if it's better, there are some areas where I will propose to reallocate some funds into the municipal department budgets, and I'll get that in a moment.
Mr. Cluthar, could I, could I just ask, overall, you know, we went to the GIC a few years ago, or more than a few now, but I assume we're still ahead in terms of, we had, prior to that, we had Blue Cross, Blue, a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan and a Harvard plan, I think, were the two that we offered, and I'm assuming that we're still satisfied?
Yes.
Is this a question?
Yes.
Are we still feeling that it was financially worthwhile to transfer?
Yes, it, we do believe that, and we have the numbers to prove it, for both the town and the employees, especially the employees, we believe, have fared well. And I have a slide in a little bit talking more about that, so I'll just, I'll just wait until I talk further about that. Increased enrollment is accounted for in the town-school partnership formula. The schools have reserved some money for new hires, and we've been very clear, I think the whole override debate was very clear, that if the schools were in a hiring mode, where they were going to increase employees, they had to cover the benefit cost of those new employees as well as part of the override funding. And so the schools do have a reserve for any, anything more than the normal churn in the, in the health insurance enrollment. On pension funding, that's a big part of our budget. We have an unfunded liability that we're trying to reach by the year, I believe, 2030. Unfortunately, every now and then, we get really bad investment years, market years, because these funds are very long-term investments, and so we go into the market to invest, and as you painfully remember, we had some pretty bad years in eight and 11, and as a result of that, we reduced our rate of return assumption, down from 8.15 down to 7.65 percent, and I believe we're still wanting to get that, that lower, because we had a bad year this year, in 2015, and you probably will see some impact on that in the 2018 appropriation, but for at least fiscal '17, we're, we're making our, our typical increased appropriation as part of our actuarially funded plan. Moving to OPEB, we're not even on a actuarially funded plan yet, but we're getting there, and we believe our goal, which will be to get to the annual required contribution, will be in less than 10 years if we keep up our annual appropriation increase of $250,000. And every now and then, we're able to even supplement that with some, some other revenues. This year, we don't have that, that ability, but we are going to increase the OPEB fund by $250,000. Very few communities are doing this, and I think they are going to be in tough shape when, when and if Gatsby or some other organization says that, you know, you have to start funding this liability. That's going to be a big, a big nut for some of those communities, and so the extent that you can get going on it, and we've been, have a good head start, we feel we're in very good shape, and I think you heard the auditors mentioning that. It does not go unnoticed, and I think it's a really good opportunity for the town.
I have another question, sorry.
Sure.
Sometimes I fear that, you know, we're probably at the very top in terms of, in terms of funding our OPEBs, but sometimes I fear that the communities who are at the very bottom are going to end up getting a boost from the state, just like, I would, I would analogize it to what happened with the counties. Norfolk County was, you know, run well and did well, and some of the counties that didn't, okay, they didn't do well, so they got taken over by the state, and the state fixed the budgets, and, and, you know, we're, we're in the position of, of getting disadvantaged by that, really. So I'm just wondering what's the chance of that happening in this situation?
Well, it is Massachusetts, after all, so, you know, that, that does happen, and, you know, when crisis occurs, then, you know, sometimes people are bailed out. I think this one is such a huge obligation that I don't think there's enough money to bail, bail communities out, or get them to a point, but, you know, do I think some of that will happen? I do, but I, I, I would not count on that, and I would not, I believe that the money that the town is putting aside is a good, is a good investment, and we'll be that far farther ahead. You know, we do talk about that a lot of times with the governor and anybody who will listen, that we feel that communities who help themselves shouldn't be penalized when a crisis happens, and, but you know how things go.
Is there, is there a different, so we're, we're operating on, you want to do it in less than 10 years?
Well, no, to be really clear, 10 years is just getting us to the point where we have enough.
Is the arc.
Funding that then we can start a routine funding plan. We're not even there yet. So for example, our pension funding, we've been on a plan now, an actuarially funded plan for, I'd say, maybe 15 years or more. We're not even there yet with the OPEBs. We've, we're not even to the point where we can start doing that. We think we'll get to that point in 10 years, but we're going, then it'll be like a 30-year funding schedule after that.
I see.
Special appropriations are pretty much our capital budget, and we'll get into that more, but we are funding from our general revenue, 8.8, or both general revenue and free cash, almost $9 million, half from general operating revenue and half from free cash. Overall, when you include the debt exclusion funding, our capital expenses are 8.3 percent of the town's prior net revenue, which is a good, healthy amount, but as you will notice, there's some big projects that are going to influence our capital improvement plan over the next several years, one of which is the high school project, and I know there will be some discussion, I've already heard about it in the advisory committee, wondering, you know, whether it was good to defer the high school, can we defer the high school project by a year for the feasibility study? You know, we did that because, you know, we were counting on state funding, and the state pushed us out a year, so we thought it was appropriate to push the project out a year. I would also say that the project isn't as well-defined as normally. We, we have projects at this point in time when we're starting to appropriate money for feasibility funding. One thing we did by pushing the high school feasibility study out a year is, we did make sufficient funding available to do the feasibility study for the night school, which I think is on a much, much more timely frame, in a quicker timeframe.
Do, do we even have the bandwidth?
That was a question that was raised at the committee this, this evening, and it's a really good question. We will, we only have really one, a person who can do project management for one project of this magnitude, Tony Quickly has been serving in that capacity, so he's with devotion now for the next couple of years, and so we know we'd have to go out for project management. But the question is, in one of the slides you'll hear when I talk about long-term planning, we're really reaching the point where we are out of bandwidth in terms of all of our departments, whether it's planning, engineering, building, all of these departments and staff are really working on these major projects, and they really do tax our ability, our capacity.
I know, even at our level, the select level, we, I've, I've had serious questions on our bandwidth as a body to, for just the level, the kind of stuff we deal with, we can have.
Well, I, I think that's probably a good, is probably a good idea to make sure that we include funding for project management in any overrides, we should, any debt exclusions we do, because, you know, if, if we can't, if we don't have the staff now to do it, then we're going to have to find them somehow.
Sure. We do typically fund project management, even, even when we do, it's funded in-house, it is a component of, of our. It is a component of, of our capital projects. What we're talking about possibly is raising more money through the capital project for project management, other, to, to offset some of the, the bandwidth issues that we're facing.
See, but even if we hire outside project managers, we're, we're still going to have to manage that. So you, you can't just offload everything.
Right.
That's a recipe for trouble.
Right. The overall management and the policy direction is something we have to fit within our, within our existing capacity. So now, our non-appropriated enterprise expenses, we're seeing a slight decrease overall in these non-appropriate expenses. It's mostly in the overlay. Our MBTA assessment, and somewhat surprising, our Norfolk County assessment is not going up.
Really?
We were expecting a, an increase in the county assessment because it's based on equalized property value, and, but apparently they're, they hadn't done that reassessment this year, and we're not saying anything. So yes, you don't?
They also know we want to get out of it, so.
Well, right, that could be a factor.
I doubt that.
So biggest, biggest of these are the MBTA and the Norfolk County, but our overlay is going down just slightly. But that's good news, I think, in the budget. Our enterprises are going up by 4.4 percent overall, fueled mostly by the MWRA assessment into our water sewer enterprise. But also, you will hear again how the Recreation Revolving Fund has been in an increasing capacity mode, trying to capture some of that capacity and then allow the, allow it to go to the general fund to support that revolving fund. But we have, we believe we've reached that limit based on reasonable expenses. You know that the Recreation Department was impacted heavily by our, by the new minimum wage and also our sick leave policy that we adopted in lieu of the state law. So these are impacts for them, and then they have just the, the reasonable fees for cert, for having recreational services that they think they've reached their, their limit, and we agreed with them. So you won't see any increase in cost recovery in the Recreation Revolving Fund this year after several years of increasing. I want to move now on to some of the policy issues and initiatives in this budget. Some of them are, have some more or less budget impact in fiscal '17, but I think it's really important. We, we believe, we spend so much time in the budget process talking about policy issues and operational issues, that we want to share those with you, things that are driving our decisions. And one of them is the diversity inclusion issue. I just want to remind everyone that we do have a new department, a diversity department with our chief diversity officer and a, and staff, and within that budget, there is programming. So we're actually doing things, not just responding to issues, but also doing programming throughout the year, and I just want you to be aware of that. We do believe that we'll need more independent consulting in, in the area, diversity inclusion, training, doing more in, in independent investigations, and seeking some overall guidance for the issues and the challenges that we're facing. We believe the fiscal '17 budget can accommodate those, but of course, we always are looking, if we can't afford those, to go to our reserve fund, which we have done with the litigation expenses. Unfortunately, we've been involved in costly litigation in some of these, in this area, and probably will be for the foreseeable future. So that's one of the reasons why we increased the legal budget by $100,000 in fiscal '17. But I want you to know that that continues to be a concern for us. Another one is solid waste. We are, believe it or not, on the verge of recommending to you a modified pay-you-throw system to be implemented in the fall of 2016. What this modified pay-you-throw system will be, we know, will be a uniform trash bin that will allow for automated pickup. And that's really important, because that automated pickup will result in reduced labor costs, and that's where we have captured most of our municipal efficiencies in the, in the override plan, three-year override plan. I, I'm currently having a task force evaluate what the default bin size would be, what those overflow options would be, and what the costs would be in relation to the, to the trash fee and how we would allocate that. I will say that under no circumstances are we looking to reduce our overall revenue from, from our trash operation, and possibly, given some of these options, we might increase it to some extent. The override study committee did note that the solid waste operation, even though it's not technically a revolving or enterprise fund, does not cover its costs, so to speak. So we are aware of that, but I think in a year where we're implementing such a dramatic change to the way that trash is, is collected in the town, that we're probably not likely to just increase the fee, but, but the mix of the fee might result in increased revenue to the town. I don't want to say much more than that, other than to say that we're working very hard to try to develop an easy, the easiest program as possible for the residents of the town. We understand that this is a change to fit everything into a bin, whereas right now, people can pretty much throw out different receptacles and amounts of trash. But I, we, we think we're ready for the modified pay-you-throw system in fiscal '17. Another policy issue that I want to talk about is performance management. Since I've come here, I've, that's been a big issue for me, and that is to try to get our department heads, but also advisory committee and yourself to use data and the measurement of, of things, more and more in making decisions about how we allocate our money and how we spend our money. It started with changing what we call, we would call performance measures, but they used to be called output, they were more output measures. So how many things we did, how many potholes we filled, and how many books that were circulated in the library, or, you know, these, these outputs that in the, in and of themselves don't mean anything. It means we're working hard, but how is, how are, how are the results? And so what we're trying to do is change the culture of our organization to think more in these terms of, of performance measures and how to improve the results of our organization, and how to identify where, where we need to allocate our money. And so I'm going to use the available funds within my budget for consulting or other professional services to do some training with our departments and mid-managers to really push that ball forward. I think you recall that one of the reasons we hired Austin was for his experience in Somerville, which did a lot of work in this area. And so we hope to use some of those examples, but do it in the right way for Brookline. And we're still working on that, but we look forward to that. And that's, so that's a big theme of, of mine in, in general, but in this budget as well. And we're also doing the National Citizen Survey again. We did it three years ago, and we're going to do that again to help evaluate how the residents feel we're doing, and to get some information that could be, not only compared three years ago, but also to other communities, because the National Citizen Survey is done by hundreds of municipalities throughout the country, which we can share data and compare ourselves against. Building operations and maintenance. Last year in the budget, we indicated that we were going to spend money to, to evaluate our building operations. It's a big part of the town's budget. We have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of square feet of buildings, and the energy they use that really costs the town a lot of money. So we decided to spend money in this current fiscal year. In fact, we did that, and we, we just received a report from the Matrix Consulting Group that looked at our building operations. This includes the school buildings as well. And it looked at a really stronger need to develop a longer-term strategic plan about how we manage our buildings, especially in preventive maintenance. That's where, you know, we put money in, and in the long run, it's a good investment. There's good return on that investment. The consultants indicated that much more use of the technology and also the town's website could be used to advance this area. They did make several recommendations around increased staffing and other resources to meet these demands. We're, we do not have any specific recommendations in fiscal '17 for that. We really just got the study, and we really need to look at that, and also with the school department, to look at how we're, we would be able to, to accommodate that staffing and resources in this tight budget environment. But I think the point is, is that these are investments that can pay off because of the, the amount of money that we use to heat and power our buildings and light our buildings. They're, they're extensive, and we believe that there is a lot of capacity there to save, to save money on the building. So you'll be hearing about that in the budget throughout the year, and we will make sure you get a copy of the report that was just issued. Going back to technology and parking meters, that got the most discussion at the advisory committee, probably. Parking meters seems to, to get everybody's interest. But in connection with increasing the 25, the meter rate by 25 cents, we will be upgrading the parking meter fleet to accept credit cards and communicate wirelessly with enforcement personnel. So these are the so-called digital meters that we have out there, but not, we haven't fully transitioned to those. And we will do that beginning in fiscal 2017. I think the important thing to know is, of course, it's nice to have a, a parking meter that accepts credit cards, so you don't have to keep a lot of quarters, but it also helps us, because what you'll see now with those digital meters is the enforcement personnel are walking around with a handheld, handheld device, and they're communicating with the meters wirelessly. And they're telling basically the enforcement meter personnel which spots to, to enforce, to, to ticket. So it is really a good initiative that way. So that's part of our, our, our capital budget this year. We are going to also test the use of mobile cellphone parking technology. For those of you who've ever used it in Boston, very convenient, I find personally. I can't believe, every time I use it, I just say to myself, I can't believe it's so easy. Don't have to get out of the car in the wind and the rain, try to read the meter and figure out what it says in the dark. And so we're going to be experimenting with this. Again, Austin has some good experience, serving as the parking clerk in the city of Somerville during his tenure there. So we're going to experiment with, with cell, pay-by-cell this year, and as a result, we're not going to go all the way to digital meters, we're just going to hold back a little bit and see how this, this goes. Because in, in true mobile technology, you don't really need a parking meter, although I think, you know, we're going to continue to have parking meters, but we're going to look to see how, how this plays out before we go fully implement all of our, of our parking meters.
So would we ever be in a situation where you need, you, you, you need a, a smartphone to park?
Ultimately, I think that's the way it'll go, but not in the near, near term.
Yeah, we're not, I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah, I was, I was reminded that at the advisory committee this, this evening. But, but it is, it is something that people want, and we're going to experiment with it a bit, but not, not in lieu of parking meters.
So we've got some smart meters out there now.
We have.
Is this a technology, the pay-by-cell phone, that we can implement in the existing smart meters?
Yes.
So it's an additional functionality that can-
Yes, it's sort of a-
So do you need a smart meter to, so we can implement it town-wide?
Yes.
So you don't even need a meter to use this technology a lot? There are some communities that have neglected upgrading their meters because they have pay-by-cell technology. You could use both. And just to your earlier question about whether or not, what direction we're going in with smartphones, the MBTA uses pay-by-cell technology for all their parking lots, and they do not accept cash anymore.
So what's the delta between the increase in credit card fees for the town and the coin collection that we have to pay for?
So it all depends on the adoption and how many people use it. We're projecting about a $30,000 increase in credit card fees. The benefit of the pay-by-cell technology is that you don't have to pay for the data storage that you do with a meter. So there's savings there. It's, that's why we're recommending a slower implementation, so that we can examine, you know, whether or not the pay-by-cell technology is working well.
So when you, and maybe this is a discussion for, actually, when we do it, would it be just a part of town for a limited implementation? Or how do you implement this in a limited way?
So the pay-by-cell technology could be used across the town. So it would just be by zone, and if you're in the area where, you know, you can use it, and you could also use the app in Boston and here, so.
Don't you have to have the, the, don't you, I mean, as I recall, when I've used it at other places, that you put in the number of the space you're in. So we would have to go around and number all the spaces.
No, there, there's zones. So, for example, this area of Harvard Street would be one zone, and you break it up in that way. It's not by space.
I see.
Yeah, I seem to recall, I've, I've seen it in Washington, DC, and-
There are a lot of different models on how we, we can implement, and we've been working with a company called Pathboard Parking, and Todd will probably have more information when it comes for DPW's budget review as well.
Okay. Interesting.
Related to that, we-
And I'll, I'll just end it with, we're, as, 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 as modern as the sounds, I think we're, we're kind of late to the game, you know, in other parts of the country, so.
Yeah, well, you know, I think we saw with the experience of the multi-space meters that, you know, what works for other parts sometimes doesn't work here, so. We're going slow, but I, I, I think, I personally think that cellphone technology will, is the way with the future for parking and other, and other charges as well, but we're going to go slow. Related to, to the parking meters is credit card fees, not just meters, but we charge credit cards, we allow the use of credit cards for a lot of our town payments. And we have been allocating the cost of those throughout the departments, and this year for fiscal '17, we've decided to consolidate, consolidate all those fees under the treasurer collector. It'll, will help us better manage those fees and decide, you know, which ones to, you know, we've been talking a little bit about, you know, maybe we're going to pass on some of the cost to the user, maybe we'll try to re-bid certain aspects of the transactions. And so we think it's better to do that when we can consolidate those and put those under one. So we're going to put all the treasure, all the credit card fee, fees this year, fiscal '17, under the jurisdiction of the treasurer collector.
So in the departmental credit card transactions, are those negotiated by the departments currently, or is it centrally, do we have one agreement?
So that was part of the problem, is that, you know, the, the treasurer pays the bills, but the department is actually, the, the bill is resting in the department's budget. So there was a disconnect between, you know, what people were paying versus-
So recreation would negotiate their own deal, and?
No, I think Sean, he used to be working a lot with some of these companies as well, and we had talked last year about doing this in terms of consolidating it under finance. Because I, I view these, these charges in the same way as like banking services, where, you know, it's really something-
Well, that's what they are.
...the finance director should be kind of looking at, you know, all forms of payment that come into the town, so.
Thank you. Moving on, I, I refer to this as succession planning. You will see, I think we all know Steve Cirillo has announced that he will be retiring. And so you will see in the next, I think, two years, a very significant transition in our department head ranks for the town. You know, we have a cer- certain cohort of department heads that are at a certain level of age and, and experience in their careers, and so we are going to see a fairly rapid transition. And when we do that, we develop a need to develop some institutional knowledge and leadership within our, our existing ranks to accommodate this transition. And that's not to suggest that assistant department heads will automatically move to department heads, that's not the point. Although we certainly hope that they will develop their experience and their leadership capacity to, to move up in the ranks. But this is really to make sure that when a department head is leaving, that we have somebody available during this transition period to really understand some of these issues, to help support the, the new department head, and so on. And so this is becoming a big, a big issue for me, a policy issue of the town, and I think you will, you will see it on, on the board level as well. We are going to be working with Northeastern University MPA program to, to develop a template, also on this, on this issue back to the diversity inclusion of trying to figure better ways to diversify our applicant pool. Moving on to energy efficiency and sustainability, we are always looking for opportunities to invest into technology to reduce our energy costs and become more sustainable in that area. LED streetlight program is probably the most- LED streetlight program is probably the most shining example of that, where by the time we're done converting our streetlights, we'll save $180,000 per year in energy cost for that. And that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to find those opportunities where some investment will pay off in that, in that period of time and then ongoing. We also were able to time the market, and I know you all feel it at the pump, you save a lot of money these days. And we also took advantage of that by contracting our, our gas and diesel prices for next year. We've already bid those, and we have prices in hand.
I heard they're very low?
They're very good. You know, we don't heat much of our buildings with, with heating oil anymore, but, but still, we use plenty of gas and diesel in our vehicles. And we are continuing our commitment under the Green Communities Act and standards to procure more energy-efficient vehicles. In fact, we're, we're doing that all the time nowadays. So good news on the energy front, and that will help a little bit. And then this long-range strategic planning is the thing we started to talk a little bit about when we were talking about the capital planning. I don't have to tell you that school classroom space consisting of a ninth elementary school and expanded high schools taking, dominating really our, our discussions these days. Affordable housing is another one. We're currently engaged in a housing production plan, but also being faced with multiple Chapter 40B permit applications. The sign of the economy is such that it makes it lucrative, I think, or more, more acceptable to submit these applications. And so we're dealing with that. Based on last year's override study committee's report, we've begun to map out a way to evaluate the town's strategic assets and large land parcels. And we're also participating in the community compact that, and some of you were here when the lieutenant governor signed the agreement. So all of these are long-range strategic planning. But one of the things you don't see up there, for example, is economic development. And so what's happening is our economic development director is staffing the school classroom space initiative. Now, that's good for the school space, and that's a very, very important, if not the most important, issue we're dealing with from a planning point of view. But we're starting between that and the affordable housing, starting to really lose our bandwidth, as you, as you pointed out. And I know you're going to be hearing that from different advocates this year, including the Economic Development Advisory Committee, talking about how do we replace that kind of capacity if we, if we want to do meaningful planning in those other areas. If the health insurance is not as bad as we project, that might free up some money, and that's what will go into some of these policy issues and initiatives, especially in the planning department, which is really under the gun with, with these, with these areas. And then finally, final slide on these policy initiatives is the employee wages and benefits. Our wages and benefits, when you include all town and school departments, represent 82% of every dollar we spend. And so I don't have to tell you, I think you know you've been dealing with these issues. We've been dealing with collective bargaining, some of which is not even under our own jurisdiction. If it gets at an impasse, police and fire collective bargaining moves over to a state agency, agency called the Joint Labor Management Committee, otherwise known as JLMC. And as you know, we have our current impasse in the fire negotiations, which is under the jurisdiction of the JLMC right now. And so these are big expenses, big uncertainty, especially around the JLMC, where although we, we don't, aren't obligated, our legislative body is not obligated to fund these, they are essentially a binding arbitration that will be binding on this board and myself to recommend the town meeting when we get them. And so that raises a major concern for us and our, with our ability to pay in this current environment. Health insurance...
Just, just to note, we, just to emphasize, we have one, our fire contract is currently going to the JLMC. So we're, we have a exposure there.
Right, I would say in a few months, we'll, we'll know the outcome of that. And then health insurance, Nancy, this is an area where I want to talk a little bit more about. We are, we are satisfied with the GIC. The GIC is great because it provides a lot of variety for our employees that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do because of, you know, we're a small community. But GIC offers multiple plans with, you know, different levels of network and gives freedom of choice for our employees, which is nice. And we also, I believe, have experienced a relatively lower rate of increase than other purchases of a health insurance or vendors have used because of the purchasing power of the GIC and other elements of their management. But it's expensive. We bargained, when we went at the GIC several years ago, the town bargained a higher contribution rate, combined with some health reimbursement accounts for high deductibles, because it was such a different plan. And now we're living with that, of course. We have to, the only way you can change that is through a, a separate but coordinated bargaining process with a public employee committee, which is a consolidated committee of all of our unions, including retirees. And I don't have to tell you, it's, it's very hard to negotiate the kind of changes in these areas, but we are currently engaged with the PEC, and we're having some dialogue. Our contract expires with GIC next year. Both parties have indicated a preference to go forward with GIC, however. And then pensions and OPEB funding, I already talked about, but these are major expenses. And we always have to keep in mind, when we make financial decisions, operating decisions, that they will have an impact on our pension and OPEB liability. And the final slide before I turn it off to Melissa is that this document is not only a plan for our fiscal 2017 budget, but it's also a longer-term financial plan. In addition to the longer-term capital budgeting, we also do some longer-range budget planning and try to take a little longer outlook and see what some of the trends and issues are so we can be ahead of them. When you see the, the, the long-range plan in this book, you'll see deficits, and they get bigger every year because they're cumulative in nature. But in reality, we will, we will balance our budget every year. So the, the gaps that you'll see in the, in the plan ranging up to eight and a half million at the end of that, of that period of time, really are overstated because we will always balance our budget, and we'll also always figure a way how to balance that budget. But I think it's, it really is instructive to look out long-term, and you'll see that we do have this structural gap between how much we're able to generate in revenue and how much it costs us to operate in an environment of increasing enrollment and the kind of costs that are representative of, of operating a municipal government, which is a service industry. So we think that, you know, you got to take it with a grain of salt, but overall, we think that it's important to really pay attention to that structural gap and figure out how to deal with it. When you end up not being able to deal with it, we end up looking at override, like a tax override like we did last year. And we see it, our job is to try to extend that period of time between overrides as long as we possibly can. And one way to do that is to try to balance the revenue growth with the expenditure, expenditure control. This override plan is for three years. We really would like it to last much longer than that, or longer than that. And that's going to be our task every year, is try to figure a way to balance things so that we can avoid going for an override. We know we're going to have to go for debt exclusion overrides, which are temporary but long-term debt that gets added on top of the tax rate. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, who'll go into more detail, and then we'll both be available for questions.
So before I get started, I just wanted to thank Austin for all his efforts this budget season. I was joking with the advisory committee, and I said, you know, the budget is challenging enough, and Austin went and had a baby in the middle of the whole process. So he kind of had two babies during this budget season, one of them being the FY17 budget. But thanks, Austin, for all your hard work. I know what all the grunt work that it takes to get, you know, the guts of the budget prepared, and it's been great having him working on, on the team. So this slide here is just a summary of the overall financial plan, where you can see the various funds that contribute to the whole picture. You've got the general fund, and obviously Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Parking Meter Fund, Cemetery Trust as well. This is the slide that Mel was referring to earlier in the presentation, where we try and capture what would be a fully allocated budget, where you can see a more realistic picture of the, the school side as well. We basically take an exercise that we do over the summer, where we get town services on behalf of schools, and use that to try and allocate that within the fiscal 17 budget as well. So this is just a summary of your general fund, where you can see you've got revenue of 10.1 million. And luckily, we had a small decrease in the non-appropriated, which makes our amount available for appropriation about 10.24 million. And so this is just a summary of the overall revenue picture for the town, where you can see that property tax is our major source of funding here as well. And then you can see the, the smaller increases for state aid and local receipts as well. So just a little bit more detail about local receipts. Obviously, we talked earlier about the decline in pilots specifically because of the 121A. I'm also projecting a small, well, a $100,000 decrease in parking and court fines. I think that we'll find that as we implement pay-by-cell technology and have more ways to pay via the IPS meters, that we'll probably see more compliance, meaning less tickets will be written. So that's just an indication of that as well. This is just the slide that we show every year on how we allocate our free cash. We obviously start with our reserve, reserve fund and our other reserves that we need to follow the recommendations of the Fiscal Policy Review Committee. And then we use some of it for the CIP. We try and get to seven, seven and a half percent of prior year net revenue. In addition, if there's less than five and a half million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we deposit some money in there as well. And then special use, we can revisit any of the first five, and we're recommending that the special use be fully allocated to the CIP as well. So this is just showing why we're not appropriating the full amount of free cash. We're concerned about our overall fund balance level. Advisory committee actually asked me whether or not we had heard any information from Moody's about the decline in free cash this past year. Obviously, it was storm-related. Steve and I have our call in a couple of weeks, so we'll get a better understanding of the impact of that decline. But we're going to see that across the Commonwealth, because a lot of communities were dealing with massive snow deficits. So it shouldn't be anything that's too surprising, and we were able to solve it within one year, which I think is a good sign as well.
Do you have a sense of how many communities had to extend out and pay that, that debt over, I think, three years the state gave communities?
Yeah, I don't think the DLS provided a summary of that. That would be an interesting metric to see, though.
Yeah, because they, they needed to get DLS permission, didn't they? Yeah, so they, you'd think they would track that. But I would also think, you know, there's a reason you, you have this kind of unallocated fund balance, and that's to handle things like terrible snowstorms. So the fact that we used it for that shouldn't be shocking. But I'm not Moody's.
This next slide just shows the changes in the expenditure side of the budget, where you see the school appropriation growing by 4.8 million, the town side 1.7, benefits obviously is a big piece of our budget at 3.5. The decline that you see in the capital project surplus reappropriation, I think you may remember in fiscal 16, we had re-appropriated the Driscoll School money into classroom capacity, so that just shows why that account is changing, because it's only, it's one-time money, and it's not available next year. This is just more information about our OPEB funding plan. One of the things I talked about in the financial forecast, and again, with the advisory committee, is that the Medicare Part D subsidy is going to be changing, whereas we used to get it as a revenue stream, and now we're, we're hearing from the GIC that it's going to be shown in our rates, which means that this funding source, not in 17, but in 18 and beyond, is, will be declining. So we need to think about what that means in terms of our OPEB funding plan, and whether or not we're still able to get to that arc. Obviously, with the new finance director in place, this is one of the areas that we'll be focusing on. We also talked about the pension system. Obviously, the calendar year 2015 performance was not great, so we know that that's going to be a concern in fiscal 18. This, the funding, the actuarial report, I think we're going to be getting some time this spring, so we'll have a better sense of what that means in terms of the fiscal 18 appropriation. But for 17, we're on the current schedule, so...
This may be a question for the retirement board, but do you know if there's any stipulated risk tolerance within the investment portfolio that the retirement board holds?
Yeah, that will probably have to be something that they could answer.
What I'm trying to get at is, clearly, the market performance is going to be poor to abysmal if current trends in 2016 continue. I'm wondering whether the retirement board has to liquidate some assets at an even greater loss than they would like to, and that's going to exacerbate the performance, the poor performance, and require us to make even larger contributions going forward. But that's a question for the retirement board.
It's my understanding, too, that they use five-year rolling averages. So if you have one bad year and a bunch of good years, they kind of balance each other out to a degree.
Right, but within a certain year, a certain asset allocation, a certain class of assets performs particularly poorly, do they have to liquidate?
Yeah.
It's a question for the retirement.
It gets into operations of the retirement.
Or their debt, or their investment policy, which is something I think we need to look at.
So this is just another snapshot of the overall picture of revenue and expenditures, where you can see kind of the same categories that we just outlined earlier. And this is a summary of the growth in the town side. Obviously, we have a collective bargaining assumption in here. We have 248,000 for steps and other employee-related increases. Mel already talked about the increase to outside council. The overall sanitation budget, there's a lot of things going on in that budget. Obviously, we had to recapture the, the increase in the recycling contract that we used the reserve fund this year to pay for. So now we actually have to find recurring revenue to pay for it in fiscal 17. But we also have the savings from implementing pay-as-you-throw with automated collection. We're able to reduce laborers by three positions. Obviously, we're going to be tritting these positions out and avoiding layoffs with that as well. The IT budget, I think I talked about this when we presented the preliminary CIP, that we would be seeing some growth in here as well, showing the shift between, you know, servers and software, and really looking at maintenance costs and seeing the growth on the operating side, not so much on the capital side anymore. TDM study means transportation demand management. I take the T to work, but I know that I hear from a lot of people how challenging it is to find parking around town hall. So that's one of the things that we'll be looking at with DPW, to have a study to look at the overall transportation management plan for the town hall. And the school department as well. Building repair and maintenance, obviously, we, the matrix report came out kind of at the tail end of our budget discussions, but we did try and provide some additional funding for the building department as well. You can see the change in the utility budget, that's primarily in our diesel and gasoline. Really thankful that David, you know, times the market really well and gives us good news. It was really good to hear.
This year?
Yes.
It isn't always so.
That's true, that is true. But, you know, generally, you know, he's been, we've been pretty good, the way he's been timing it for the past few years, so I hope, I hope it continues. The Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget, primarily the MWRA assessment is the major item in this budget. One of the other things that we're going to be recommending is some of their fund balance be used for CIP projects. This is something that we've discussed over the summer with Steve and Fred Russell, about whether or not there would be the ability for some fund balance to be used to pay for some of these projects. We can talk about that more...
Some non-water and sewer?
No.
Oh, oh, okay.
The golf enterprise fund, probably one of the biggest changes you're going to see maybe at the tail end of this year, beginning into next, is the, the driving range and the impact that that has on the water, the golf budget. And Lisa can talk to you about the plans for that as well. Rec revolving fund, we had talked earlier about the ability of the fund to take more of the general fund subsidy away by moving costs out of the general fund and into the rec revolving fund. And Lisa is prepared to talk about how she feels like she's reached the maximum from what she thinks that the revolving fund can absorb in terms of being able to recover those costs through the fee structure that they currently have. costs through the fee structure that they currently have.
Is there any, any thought to changing the fee structure?
They look at it every year, and I think that they have, you know, a model that they use to project what they think that they can capture in terms of cost recovery. So, the CIP is the next item that we're talking about here, and obviously, we talked about it when we first had the forecast. We've got some money programmed for the classroom capacity account. Mel talked a little bit about the change in the assumption for the high school project. The CIP continues to follow the funding plan, which calls for six percent of prior year net revenue plus free cash to get to seven and a half percent. We're actually at seven point nine when you factor all of that in. So, these are some of the major changes from when we first presented the CIP in December. The high school project has been moved to fiscal 18, which allowed us to fund a ninth school feasibility study. The Riverway Park adjustment just shows the timing of the outside funding is actually in fiscal 16, and I think we had reflected it in 17, so that's just a minor change. The Coolidge Corner Library is another project that has been kind of bubbling up in terms of the feasibility study that was concluding around January, and I know that they had a public meeting talking about some of the concepts that came out of that, that study as well. We're still continuing to talk with the library, but the ability of that project to move forward is really heavily dependent on grant and outside funding as well. So, this is an overall summary of the CIP, where you can see the six percent policy combined with free cash, combined with other revenue sources, whether it be in a reappropriation of existing funds, the debt exclusion. The debt exclusion that you see in fiscal 17 is for the high school, and if you look at fiscal 19, that's when the debt exclusion for the devotion school kicks in. So, you can see that overall, the CIP, seven, seven point nine percent, but when you add the debt exclusion on top of it, it's eight point three.
So, the nineteen debt exclusion, that would be in eighteen, and that takes into account the re-timing that you did.
So, the, the high school, that's the old high school debt exclusion project, which is yet, there's still a few more years on that project. That will roll off, and then it'll be exclusively.
The nineties.
Yep. So, when you see this debt exclusion here of three point five one seven, that is only devotion school, the high school's done by then. And then, obviously, there very well could be a new high school project that gets layered on top of that. So, these are some of the major projects included in the CIP. So, the parking meter technology, originally, we had programmed it all for 17, but considering the pay-by-cell, we are spreading that implementation over a longer period of time. Coolidge Corner, we've already talked about that as well. Chief Ford is very excited that his fire station six improvements and the fleet maintenance facility there, that's programmed for fiscal 17. And we've got some work at the park systems as well, including Brooklyn Reservoir.
So, I note that the high school project assumes MSBA participation, which I know right now is under discussion, and we're going to be talking about that probably next week, because we have to make decisions as a town whether to submit an SOI, and we have to do it very soon. And I know the advisory committee, subcommittee was recommending against it. So, you know, there are pros and cons.
Submitting an SOI for any project or specific high school project?
The high school, and, and, and I think it's a little clearer not to submit an SOI for the elementary school. But that, that's going to be an interesting discussion.
And we had talked about, you know, if that decision does change, the level of feasibility study needed for that project also needs to be defined even further.
Correct.
So, this is the blizzard of numbers that basically, you can't really read, so I'll just go to the charts that show. That basically just shows the structural gap that exists between revenue and expenditures that we try and solve every year. And if there are additional questions, we're here for whatever you.
So, we will be scheduling now for the next several weeks, department heads who will come in, present their budget, at least in a summary fashion, and, you know, you'll get into the more details. But, happy to answer any questions or take any of your comments.
Yeah, one, I think the, the big discussion item, I can already, I've already gotten some communication on, is the moving back of the high school in the CIP. And, you know, one of the, one of the reasons not to go for MSBA funding is to try and short, try and move, move that process up, but if we can't afford to move it up, I wonder if that's a factor and whether or not we should try for MSBA. So, I, that's a discussion.
I think it's all sort of tied together, you know, this issue about, about funding and using the state to support these projects. You know, if we're not going to do that, we need to understand how we are going to fund them. I don't think there's any question that projects of the magnitude that we're talking about will eventually require a debt exclusion, but I don't know we can do it without it.
Right, but it needs that seed money.
How to get to that point.
Yeah, to get to the point where we even know how much to ask for from the voters.
One of the, I guess this is a little bit inside baseball, but one of the issues that's bubbling up at the state level is the state potentially hitting its bond cap in the next year, maybe even less. I'm wondering if any of the dollars that we're anticipating coming from the state are in any way connected to that, or it's just something to be mindful of?
Most of tho, you know, most of those projects are probably big public works, transportation projects, economic development projects that, you know, probably aren't in line for. But, you know, everything from chapter ninety to the, you know, which is the road improvement project, which is usually bonded, bonded by the state. So, you know, we, we will see an impact. We will see, it'll trickle down to us primarily, I think, in the transportation projects that we're able to get. So, for example, the Beacon Street project a few years ago was a state-funded project that is reliant on the bond capacity of the state.
Emerald Gateway East, potentially?
That's what I was really thinking about. Chapter ninety, certainly, we get some money, but it's not a whole lot comparatively. It's the Gateway East and some of the other road redesign projects that, that have me a little bit concerned and monitoring the situation.
Same here.
And then, foundation budget review commission implementation. I take it that, based on the numbers we saw for chapter seventy, that we haven't gotten to implementation this year. Is there a schedule for, for rolling out or implementing the recommendations?
Well, I was with a group that was with the governor and lieutenant governor the other day and asked that specific question, and they're still looking at it, so they're not making any, any commitments. But we encourage them that, you know, it's always better to start gradually and try to ease and transition into it, because, you know, you can't do it all in one fell swoop. So, they're looking at it, and that's all, that's all they were.
And I'm sympathetic that it's a big nut to crack in that, you know, the state is a little short on money, but predictability and allowing us to build our budget for future years is much appreciated.
And, you know, when I was talking with someone at Department of Education, he reminded me that the commission was a legislative commission, so it's not surprising to see that, you know, the governor's proposal is a little bit different, so.
Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you very much. This is quite an effort to put this together and.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you. So, we had a new, a new team to some extent, and Melissa's, of course, been involved in it a lot, but without Sean, Melissa stepped up. I think she's done a fantastic, I know she's done a fantastic job, and as she's already pointed out, Austin really helped fill in, under, under difficult circumstances for him, not only his first year, but also his personal situation with a growing family. So, I want to say thank you to you both, and also to Steve Cirillo, who, this will be his last budget. I think we're saying that about him all the time now, last audit, last budget, and so on.
Last refinancing, we heard a little earlier.
Yeah, that's right, refinancing. So, I wanted to say thank you to Steve, and I think you folks know probably more than anybody how instrumental he has been to establish the pilot program and the new host community agreement with, with the RMD. Without Steve's tenacious and constant emphasis on that, it would not happen. And so, it's really helped our finances a great deal.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you. And I think that concludes our business for tonight, so thank you all. We're adjourned.